About three thirty I had to get up and pack and pop and pack. Use the rest of the, it's more than that. The thing is, you can see that Wednesday.
The room?
Oh, that. We should not, Walker was still around, at least he could do something for you. Either a shot that put you out of your misery.
Well, he was in from us, but somebody had seen him one time, get kicked right across the the barn floor by a steer and didn't even, it didn't even uh, budge his, his uh, toupee. So he had plenty of glue involved in that.
I did not expect that to be the word.
Well, the, the sad part was towards the end, it was supposed to be sort of a grave, it was green.
Ouch.
Well, maybe a little bit of laundry here and sort of been involved in that.
Yeah, we've taken it off and washing it.
Well, they dropped in the gutter barn a couple of times, it started to grow things.
Well, good. The kids wanted this one tomcat when they were younger, so I said, well, okay, said, so we won't wander, take him down and.
Get him fixed, yes.
Dave goes, I can save you money. What do you mean, Dave? He went over, he got his barn boot, boom, here's his cat's leg sticking out like this.
Oh.
Oh, Dave.
Oh, that's, that's thick.
Well, that's what he did, threw some salt around him, said, okay, he's good to go.
Oh, man.
Poor kitty. Hello, we are not available now. Yes, oh, then that was, I just, that's the last time I used Dave for taking care of critters.
Hello.
Hi, Alan Slinda.
How's it going?
Good. I was just checking to see if you got all the emails I sent you.
Checking it up a little bit, so.
Oh, so it sounds like you're driving?
It's on my way back somewhere.
Oh, you had to work today. Well, we were holding, holding a special select board meeting now.
Wasn't too.
I had sent it agenda and I sent other materials to.
Two, three years.
Where are you?
Can't remember who's dog. He goes, why, I can fix it.
Did you be able to swing over to the town office?
He said, just take it home. One, two.
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't know you had to work on the weekends.
A little bit. Alice there towards the end.
We'll, you gotta remember, he got up into his seventies. People just didn't want to pay and.
I start me paying well now. Oh my God. Every time you go to the bed, you're paying for the next vacation.
Boy, you got him to go to sleep.
I mean, a hundred and sixty dollars just to pay them. Look at. Yeah, let's give it a look. Had the stray that wife took in sixteen years ago. And then took her to the one up here in Hardwick.
Yeah.
Eight hundred dollars just to look at the cat and do blood work.
That is absolute bullshit.
Kitty's almost seventeen, eighteen. How much to put it down? Fifty dollars? Oh, you know, I had good lungs. Well, it had all sorts of bungee on it, so I figure it had cancer.
There was a lot of those cancer.
Is it its time?
Oh, yeah.
I was not paying eight hundred dollars, then had you come out and say, well, it's got cancer and best put it.
I had this one cat, we've always had multiple cats, and I had this one cat. She was born on nine eleven. And.
You only want good stories about cats.
What's that?
You only want good stories about cats.
This one isn't bad. I mean, she lasted until, what's it been, a year or so? So she had a long life, but I thought she'd broken her paw. Well, it was cancer of the bone. And we had to have her put there. I I couldn't have done it. I, we took her in, I just, she was not friendly with the other cats. She would express herself as pleasure with the household in general. We got, where we had the, you know, those mesh, metal mesh cooling racks?
Yes.
Had to cover the counter with those because she'd get up there and piss on the counter. Yes. Yeah, I know.
I don't know if you remember the one, I don't know what's during her home. TJ. But you can't pet that cat. Karen went up. Cat got up on the table, laid down, and she's pouting the hell out of it. Wonder it didn't dare you? Me, all I had to do was reach out, the cat was, oh yeah. I said, okay, kitty.
Was it male?
Female.
Female.
But then.
You never know with animals sometimes.
Well, he said it was a stray and he took it in and. Nice calico looking cat.
Didn't good company, could he pet it?
He said he could give it a couple of strokes and that's it. Put it down, bat a couple of times, that was it.
Oh, wow. Probably learned from some painful minor injuries not, not to go more than two pets.
Yeah. Like I said, I'd just reach out like that cat was right back there, ready to swat.
My folks' last poodle was a nasty little ankle butter, and we had a big family dinner at the house where we are now. And I was wearing like sandals. And just sitting here at the table while I didn't know the dog was under there. And I shifted my feet, just, just, you know, like that. Bastard bit my big toe, and I just didn't live on the day. And I went, looked where he was, I gave him a hell of a little kick. He yelled, I think it knocked him to the other end of the table, and George, my stepdad, looked. Somebody hurt, your dog must have got under somebody's feet. We all rejoiced when that dog went to heaven. That was a nasty creature he was. He was terrible with the kids. The kids knew enough not to get in his face, but if he felt, if he was in the range of one of the kids, he'd bite him.
The only one I remember. I went up to uh, see uh, Givens about some parts off a car. I went up there and I go, well, where, where are they? He goes, well, you get come out here in the yard and side which thunder and bumper and whatever you want. I started to go past this flatbed truck and this dog jumps up there right at the end of the chain. I mean, good lord.
Holy shit.
Chain and I'm like, gee, Lynn, uh, how friendly is that dog? He goes, it knows enough not to bite the kid. Okay. She goes, nothing goes in that yard at night. Said a deer goes in there, it don't come out. Said, well, must be, you don't buy much dog food, do you? It happened to go up there one time for hot blow about having uh, cars to dismantle for the fire department. Those cars look like they've been shot up. Yeah, and my buddies came up. Now the kitten, we had some target practice.
Hey.
Didn't make.
Too fast.
Just got asked the name down there, so.
Thank you. Does he do car, car racing or something? Goes away every weekend. Oh.
That's surprised Canadians will let it in. Oh. No, I'm just saying, they don't want any more people.
All right, I'm gonna call the special select board meeting April fourteenth at ten, eleven, three eleven. Do you have any adjustments to the agenda? Comments from the community? If hearing none, um, we're here today to discuss the FEMA project. The questions I put on the agenda was move forward with two large projects with a question mark. Possible change in bid amount with a question mark and apply for loan with a question mark. Kurt has been working very closely with FEMA. Uh, first, we're gonna talk about the Town Hill Culvert project, which is the most pressing. And Kurt has been working closely with FEMA. I've been working closely with our engineer. We met last Thursday with our, both our engineers and also state FEMA people. But I'm gonna let Kurt um explain the situation with the FEMA part now first.
Okay, well, um, so the Town Hill Culvert, um, as you know, uh, was damaged in the flood and had been damaged uh, previous. And so uh, we, as an emergency uh fix, we hired a contractor. And the contractor put in the steel plate, uh, built up the road, pounded down the uh guardrails, and so it is in a temporary condition right now. The culvert itself, it's a metal culvert, um, is bent and eroded underneath. So it is something that needs to be resolved uh, fairly quickly. And if we were to have another flood of the uh, that road would likely uh, aid in it. So, and working with FEMA, um, this is considered a mitigation project. And what mitigation means in this case is that uh, FEMA is a standard, always has for you to uh, replace whatever was damaged in the same fashion it was before it was damaged. Mitigation means that if you were to do that, uh, you're likely putting yourself in a position where it'll just happen again. Um, so mitigation through FEMA becomes complex. There, there are a lot of complexity uh, in that process. Uh, the mitigating factor is that uh, the, the state uh, Department of A and R uh, came in and examined the site. And they determined that they would not permit the site unless we did mitigation. In other words, they won't allow us to do it in the same fashion that it was. Uh, so that kind of forces it into mitigation. Now, while talking and working with FEMA in the process, uh, their process was quite slow. Um, we've changed uh, contacts three times now. Uh, and it, there is nothing really that will move this forward any more quickly within the FEMA process. Um, and so FEMA's advice to us is do what the town needs to do. Um, and uh, so that kind of leaves us with three options because this has been a doubt at eight hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty. Um, thousand dollars. So our three options are to uh, simply move forward and do the repairs. Um, in anticipation that FEMA is wanting for it first. Uh, the second option is to um, order the concrete uh culvert itself, which I think is about two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, so kind of mitigating a little bit of that. And the third option is to do nothing and just wait for next year. Um, we did have, we had a meeting last week, um, and we did have uh, the state representative uh, on the call with us. And um, he moved us up the uh up the FEMA chain. Which can be encouraged to go ahead and move forward with this project. Our concern was that we didn't have any commitment from FEMA saying that, yes, that they, you know, this is something they're going to pay for. Um, however, once it started going up the chain, we started to get communication that, you know, really you should go forward and, and do this. Uh, because the alternative is simply gonna cost more money if we wait. Um, and they gave a degree of confidence that uh, yes, FEMA will be reimbursed at a seventy-five percent rate. Uh, and then there will be the potential for the state to uh, compensate for the, the remainder. So that's kind of where we stand right now. Um, there's two other mitigating factors. One is that the high, the low bidder uh, for the project has to schedule their time. And so the more that it's, there's uncertainty, the more that bidder might fall out. Uh, the second and more pressing issue is that the uh, the concrete uh, casting, there's only a few companies that do that. And their lead time is even shorter. Uh, so right now, I think we're right at the break point. And that, that's the reason we're having a Sunday meeting today, is we're right at the break point where uh, Concrete Caster is saying they're gonna have to go away unless we make the decision. So, does that sum it up?
Yeah, um, I'll make a couple other points um, from this email. Well, one thing is our permit to our state permit to conduct the next flood measures. That authorization expires on December thirty-first of twenty-four. The other thing is the um, um, well, according to this email, we're gonna get ninety percent, most likely get ninety percent towards the cost. And um, so the uh highest ranking uh, state representative that works with emergency management in the recovery and mitigation said that he believes that we shouldn't go under hazard mitigation, but it should be going under codes and standards because of what um, the state has told us to replace. I've talked to Joey Wilson um, this weekend. So uh, if the company we wanted to go with, it was two hundred and fifty thousand for the box culvert and wing walls and stuff. Um, they can start making it in August, but uh, it wouldn't be done until October. Which makes him a little nervous. Um, due to weather. The other thing is, um, so the engineer was asking, you know, we went on, the bid was based on two hundred and fifty thousand dollar for the box culvert. Just had it out here, um. Would the board be willing to go? If they move forward, would they be willing to go for the next highest one? Cost for that. And he in, he is checking now um, with that company and hasn't gotten back to me on that.
Does he think that other companies could work with us?
Well, he's gonna let me know on Monday.
Okay.
But, you know, I could have waited till Monday to have a meeting and then that's another way to, you know. Even if we have some of the information.
But with still the information, you could do it on Wednesday.
Well, they're hoping that we could get going. So if you have no desire to move forward, we won't, we won't waste our times doing all this work, but regardless, whether FEMA says, says yes or no, well, if FEMA says yes, we have to borrow money regardless. We always have it. You prepay and then you get paid.
Well, this is a project that really has to be done.
So this project is a project that we've been working on. Um, remember, we got a sixty thousand dollar highway grant. We did all permitting, the design, the survey. I went and got uh, we got easements from the attorneys. I got the, them signed and recorded and we had to cut some trees down before April fifteenth, um, due to some bat species. That's been done. We've done everything, you know, and now it's the FEMA thing. It was um McDonald who got the bid. It was five ninety-nine, but then with the other costs associated. Um, Joey Wilson was saying it would come in about eight fifty. But he kind of padded the you know, regardless, when we put the bill, bid bills in, invoices to FEMA, that's what they're gonna say.
Right.
The cost of the box culvert. They don't know what the cost is today, but when we show them the bill, they will. And this, and this is what, you know, I went back and forth feeling very frustrated with everyone. Um, so I wrote to the state, um, asking them, um, I, I said, Andrew, you feel confident if we move forward with permanent repairs, it will not jeopardize FEMA obligating repair costs? I am really nervous with this disorganization. Um, and so they responded, yes, I do. And Ben Rose, who's the top of the chain, voiced his support for moving forward also. Just make sure to document everything. FYI, I spoke with Kim, she's the, she pays the money. She iterated that FEMA gets nervous about funding if they get a sense that a town is only doing a repair because FEMA is present. But going forward now shows that the town is committed to doing the right thing regardless. Of course, it's the town decision, but I think it is a good bet and it seems like waiting will be even more costly. Was our response from the state.
Well, it sounds to me like we shouldn't hesitate. We, we've got to get the box cover as, you know, as soon as possible. If they take us off the waiting list, that's not gonna do us much good. We have another year flooding and we'll be in worse shape than we are now.
It's just gonna cost more in the long run, um.
I guess the only concern is that they can't cast it and deliver by October, that sort of.
So I think instead of us micromanaging everything, if we just say, go forward to Joey, if you think it's appropriate, you know, if it isn't, and it doesn't work, we're too late, then don't. I mean, I have true confidence in him and his looking out for the town. I mean, he goes over and above, I think, for what he does and what he has done in the past. Digging up documents and explaining to FEMA that this is a FEMA project. I think he's gone over and above.
Well, he's got good credibility in other words.
Yes.
I mean, I think FEMA requires all kinds of detail. Um, and in this case, the detail is there, a really good job has been done. Um, all of the engineering designs are there, all of the permits are there. Um, you know, all of their questions about uh, what kind of equipment's gonna be used and so forth and so on.
The hydraulic studies.
Hydraulic study, the, the Army Corps of Engineers study. You know, it just could not be more complete. Um, and there's no reason to think that FEMA has bought at this. It's just their, it's a very slow machine, very slow.
They're understaffed. They're understaffed.
It's racial speed, right? So was it every department.
I know.
Yeah, from what I, from the sense that I have, is since we escalated this to the state and Linda had written uh, so forth and so on, I am now working with the supervisory level at FEMA. Uh, because the other two people that I had got reassigned somewhere else in the country. And they can't find anybody else to come in for work. So we got the supervisor. And I can tell from her that there's some pressure. So I think that what we've done is working. Um, it's just what Joey and I do when we get on with her is say, when will this be approved for you? And nobody's gonna answer that question. They just will not answer this.
I don't know.
And so that's what, that's what we're facing right now. Um, but of course, the other thing is to move forward with this project. Uh, we have to have money. Which means borrowing money.
Yes.
Well, if we borrow the money to at least get the culvert made. Question is, will they store it through the winter if we don't get it until October?
So I don't think Joey will um, order it if um, he can't put it in.
Because I'm afraid then it's, we'll be back to the same thing. Well, we can't cast it because unless you show them the money upfront, then they're gonna say, oh yeah, we'll cast it, but we can't do it until.
Yeah, I think that's up to Joey, you know.
It, it gets expensive casting in the winter.
I know.
You'd rather do it from now.
Well, they're not. They have one more slot.
Right.
It'll be done in a, and, you know. So we either need to jump on it and Joey needs to talk with McDonald to see if it's realistic to do it, or he's gonna look, he wanted to look and see at S D Ireland does them. If he can, they can do them sooner. But it costs a little bit more money.
From the FEMA perspective, that's okay.
Yeah, from, yeah.
Well, I'd make the motion, we uh, go get a loan for the one hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, well, let's, let's make a motion just to go for, to agree to go forward with Town Hill without notifyca, I don't know how you wanna say it, without FEMA approval? Do you wanna do that or no? I don't want it. That we're just gonna move forward.
It just, you don't want to, we're gonna move forward.
No, just that we're gonna move forward.
Yeah.
Cause I wanna talk about another place. Too. So we have a motion on the floor that we're gonna move forward with the Town Hill culvert. If it's logistically making sense to do it this year.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Host. Thank you. Carried. Then we have Flatiron Road. That was just recently bid for $108,000. Seems low.
It's an amazing bid, $108,000.
We will be looking, right now, the, we looked at the bids on Thursday and opened them. The engineer is going through to make sure the bids were done correctly. They didn't miss anything. And we will be approving the bid on Wednesday or not.
Does that include, does that include mitigation? I mean, does that include lifting the road?
That was part of the bid.
Haven't seen the drawings yet, but.
Repair and relocation of a portion, 350 feet of flat iron road and associate approval. As it says. I think King's got the bid.
Remember, we talked about this, right?
So loans. In the meantime, I have been. Union Bank is willing to loan us a million dollars. But they, we had to redo the rate and it went up to 5.6%. So I said, Belinda, that's crazy.
That is crazy.
But I was reading about how the treasurer was using, the state treasurer was using unclaimed property money to loan to towns at like one or two percent. And we're on the list. I looked, I looked, we're on the list. Oh, I forget when she told me. I think the next time applies July 1st. I think we'll discuss the money. Maybe at the next meeting where we have more detail. Did you wanna see that one at all? More details to find out about it. Because we might, if we like, are just gonna sit on it for, you know, six weeks or something. And we just have to put it down, payment down on the culvert. I think we can come up with the money. Cash flow. Just so that, I mean, we don't have to borrow the money tomorrow.
Right, got you.
We might need to borrow the money in a month or two.
So have you, so have you thrown out Union Bank's 5%? 5% is really.
5.6.
That's, that's crazy. It's hot.
It's really, that's why I wanted.
Think about that on the million dollars. Wow.
There's that much. How much are the other banks both saying?
Well, that's why I'm gonna, I tried for this other thing. So I want her to get some more detail for us. At our meet, for our meeting to make that, to make the loan decision. I don't think we have enough information right now. But we need to consider maybe including Flatiron Road too, to move forward with soon because it needs to be, you know, if this bridge went out or this flooded, it's another way out. It's gotta be fixed for when the bridge is fixed. $100,000 isn't a lot of money. I mean, to us it is, but.
The problem with FEMA is, I'm almost guaranteed there'll be no problem because of the fire curbs.
But the trouble is that it has been the last bid and we haven't even put any stuff on, have we? Are they waiting for anything?
Of the bidding?
No, FEMA, the portal?
Right.
Is all that stuff there?
The bid is not there, no.
No, cause we haven't accepted it.
Right.
But everything else is?
Everything else is ready, yeah.
Uh huh. And we need permits. I told Dexter, we needed a permit, see if we needed a permit. I don't think we do. But, you know. The school, we need an easement.
Eastern for the school.
Right.
And from looks of it, if they're moving the road up. That means the filling for the tank to the school have to be taken out.
Well, I think they were gonna stop there or start there. I don't know what they were gonna do.
I'm not sure. It's pretty close.
What did it say on the, did it say, it didn't say we're taking it out though?
Cause starting on the hardwood side, once it's under 10 feet.
Right.
That's beyond that. Cause they're stopping before you get to the yearly age property. Is that the fire requirement you're talking about the? It's the fill station. The fill station, the school, to that tank, it's no good.
I don't think, there was ever any discussion of that. What does that show? I didn't even read the plans, cause it doesn't mean anything to me.
Turn that corner, go distance, it's right there, very big.
It looks like.
Five two foot thick.
That's, that's where that is right there.
I mean, that would help, but it'd need to be better. You could do the whole stretch, moving it back. 20 feet. That's where FEMA will step on.
It looks like it's going up to that.
Going to, it's not.
They don't say anything after it.
They don't have to remove some ledge too.
Right.
Because as soon as you pass, I can't think of her last name, Donna.
Toussaint, Toussaint.
Yeah. Ledge is right there. Not large, but it still had to be taken down. Though at least four foot down to get below frost.
So I'm not gonna make you make a decision tonight, but we can talk about it on Wednesday. You know, just think about whether we wanna take out two loans. Do we want, first of all, do we wanna move forward with a flat iron project? Do we wanna take the loans out separately? If FEMA would start paying us for the projects we've finished. We would have some cash flow and we could pay back our capital fund and we could pay for that road in cash. But they have not given us any money. Is the problem. And we've kind of depleted everything we have.
It's, it sounds like I mean, it sounds like we're definitely gonna have to borrow on it. It's just, where can we get a decent interest rate?
Right.
I'm surprised the state doesn't have something we could happen to.
Guessing the state took their extra funding to pay for the changes they did for property taxes for the schools this year. They borrowed all their funding to try to lower that.
We just borrowed money also from the slides.
No.
Put the slides up.
No, we can't. East Hill Road, pretty much they laughed at us because they said it was, didn't ruin the road.
I remember.
Then they, you know. So I don't even know if that'll end up going. Just throw some gravel down there. Town Hill Slope, that only came in at 38,000, but but then we got Jones Road that came in at 180,000. Which should be considered.
If we should be considered for our, for our money?
Well, I don't know. I.
Yeah, it's a dangerous road.
It is a dangerous road.
Now they won't do it again, right?
No, absolutely not.
And they won't lift that either. So all it is is rip right there. Throw them in. It's quite a gully, I think, that's why.
Yeah, they have to go and place it. Let's just see what rates are out there. If we're stuck with 5.6, I think I don't know. Unless, you know, I don't know how much money's out there that FEMA owes us now. Do we have any idea?
Oh, how many, how much it is right now?
Yeah, that they owe us. Completed projects.
Yeah, I guess I see just the projects as they add up now to.
Yeah, I wonder, the completed ones.
Oh, for the completed ones? It's about 500,000.
Well, that's a nice chunk.
Yeah.
That we could use.
Yeah, I mean, get the money, yeah. I mean, it's not that we're not gonna get the money. When do you get them?
Right.
And FEMA doesn't pay direct. They pay the state and then the state allocates.
They won't pay the state until the report comes in that they've approved the project.
Bureaucracy.
Oh, yeah. Frustrating. Anything else or any other questions or?
No. Excuse me.
Is there a motion to close off the Flatiron or do we need to bid?
It's, it's up to the board. I mean, I think it should be done this summer.
It's gonna be really done before Town Hill Culver. Because if we don't have a second route after that bridge is torn out. Now we're gonna have to pay for a temporary bridge that's just running lost.
Yeah.
That's almost as much as fixing Flatiron.
Do you need a motion?
Up to the board what they wanna do. I'm tired of thinking.
Well, we gotta do the job, right? I'll make a motion, then we move ahead with it.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Host, so carried. So we'll move ahead if we can get some money. We'll talk about money Wednesday.
I don't think the interest rates are gonna get any better.
No.
No.
Radio that the interest rates now are record high. Years or so, we're not gonna check.
They're gonna probably, the only way that if they did what they were intending to do with the Fed. The only way they're gonna go is up is their inflation indicators keep going up. And I don't see them unless they do some creative math somehow. Been able to justify it. So I only see them going up from now.
I mean, market trading, 75. But you know, a loan to a municipality at 5.6, this seems absurd. That was just way too. But there's no better loan to make than to make with the municipality. It's a safe loan.
Yeah, they're not, they're not gonna skip out. They can't sneak away in the night.
First part is everyone's wondering if Israel's gonna go and bomb higher wind right now, so.
Maybe Iran's gonna bomb Israel first. I don't.
They already tried.
It doesn't help, it doesn't help their case that they keep backing the people messing with world shipping. Like, the last thing I saw, something like, did they actually go legitimately take a helicopter and seize a ship in middle of the ocean?
They did.
Which it's like, that's gonna make everyone else mad.
Yeah, we'll forget the insurance. I got a billion dollar ship full of goods and a life back. This way to stop.
Yeah, I know.
It makes you cracker.
Wait until Monday, make another five.
Why was that now? Because?
Oil. Because Iran owns a lot of oil. Pay for things that we don't love to pay for. Well, if you can't pay for your oil. You're getting bombed. It's not gonna be out of wells.
And how many countries in their little alliance that they've been messing with in the Middle East? It's like, they're backing the people, the other people, Middle East don't like the Saudis and don't like causing issues. It's like, they're on the other side messing with them and then they're backing over here.
Adjourners.
Yeah.
Porter Road, I guess.
Are we adjourned?
Got to.
I'll just stay here till Wednesday. I'm tired.
Me too.
I hear a rumor that you folks are moving to Chicago.
We are, yes.
Chicken shit.
In this nasty.
Oh, wait a minute. The winters can't be any worse here than they are in Chicago. Oh. You get your wind straight from the Arctic Circle, right? No interrupts?
No interest. It's worse.
So what I think I'd be willing to do is you know, to help you get through is, couple of times here, mail you a gallon of good spring water, postage collect. So you have some, so you can survive.
C O B, yeah. Yeah, well, just downsizing now.
Yeah.